Board meeting for November 8th to order. Bruce, will you leave us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay, first up is Bracken, PB number fifteen dash thirty-five. They're here for pre-p preliminary, preliminary, final site plan. Could you please sign in and tell us your affiliation with the project?
Okay, what do we got?
So, we have a preliminary plan to repair the existing main walls. They're in a state of disrepair. And in addition to that, we want to also have a gravel surface, so it won't be too drainage. And in addition to that, put, install an underground hot tub that would not be viewable from the street. And we would like for, and not viewable by the neighbor's house either. There will be an opaque barrier between the hot tub and the neighbor's house, so they wouldn't be able to see any, any part of it. And also, we'd like to connect the patio from the deck to the deck with a circular staircase, part of which would be viewable from the street, but it would match very closely the black aluminum handrail on the deck. So I think, we think we'll just put this. And that's, that's it.
Okay.
Oh, right, right. And there's five trees we'd like to, to top. And we had this done a couple of years ago, and so they've been marked and they've been topped.
All right, Jane, what's, what's, what say you?
One of the concerns is obviously going to mark the trees that you intend to top and have an arborist describe what work can be performed on trimming those trees. This plan is a little vague. We'd like them to further delineate where the existing dwelling actually is on the plan. The hot tub and a portion of the staircase is actually located as what, is what considered their front yard. So they're going to need variances for that, because we cannot have the structures within the front yard.
Okay, but is he, is, are you changing from what the original plan was, that, what everybody saw, to now moving the hot tub, or?
Yes. Well, the whole thing has changed. Instead of redoing the outside, we're just going to replace what's there.
Instead of extending patio, we're now taking off the stair already and making it, we have to change it. It was falling apart. Everything's falling apart. So we're keeping the retaining walls with keystone. We're going to do that with keystone. And to keep the patio areas as they are, on fire, on floor.
My question is this. Is the plan that you have now different from the plan that you circulated?
In two thousand fifteen?
I don't feel, I don't care when. Is it, the plan that everybody commented on is different than the plan that you have now?
Yes.
Okay. Well, then, what do we do? Do we send them back and tell them to send everybody the plan again?
Can I, can I ask you which comments dated, is there, because I've received comments just this week. And those are regarding the current plan.
Right. So, again, I didn't review the first submission years ago. However, this is significantly different in that what they're proposing in this plan is to remove the existing railroad tie walls and replace them with a keystone interlocking type wall.
Okay.
In the existing locations.
Okay.
The previous plan had new walls in new locations.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not.
So they don't, they don't match up.
My point is, I just want to make sure that you saw the plan that they have, that's...
We did. We reviewed it at project review committee last week.
So your comments that, the comments that you have on this page from November seventh, which is yesterday.
Yes.
Are for the current plan?
They are for the current plan.
Okay. So my other comment is this. Are the, are your comments so egregious that they can't get preliminary? Or do you, you want them to, to redo the, come back to you and then we'll, you know, we'll give them a, they'll ask for a continuance? Or is it okay? And I'm not saying how this board, I just wanted to see how you, how comfortable you are.
I feel comfortable in giving them preliminary.
Okay, good.
And referring them to the zoning board, so that they can claim the required variance.
Okay, so then I'm going to read the comments. If you're here for the comments, I'm just going to tell you how many there are. If you want to see what they are. They're technical, for the most part, in the back. If the attorney or the town, I don't want, do I call you the engineer or I call you the architect? The town architect. If they have comments or they want me to read something, then I'll read them. So Ms. Slavin, Ms. Slavens has ten. Bruce Peters from, from engineering has five. Rocket County Planning has two. Sorry, three? Three, sorry, three. Rocket County Highway has two. Nothing from Department of Health. Nothing from drainage. And there's a letter from Terry Spee. And a letter from Alpine Nursery. Mr. Young?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I observed the property today, as I told the applicants. And Mrs. Slaven is correct. This is a difficult plan to understand unless you know what you're looking for. And it needs to be better described, I guess. So, but it is a tight area you're working with. And I was curious how you're going to get the hot tub down there and other, other sorts of equipment besides manual labor to clear out that area, so, but.
It'd be mostly manual labor. It won't be excavated coming down. All the, all the stones will be carried by hand. Everything will be built up by hands. It's just not, that's the plan.
That's what I figured. And as I indicated earlier, Mrs. Slaven hit on all the notes I was looking at. That's all I have. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Mr. Dell?
Yes, thank you, sir. Do you have a more up-to-date plan than the one I have here, which has a last revision date of one five to seventeen?
No, I do not. Oh, wait, yes, I... Eleven eight.
No, in the title box, it says one fifteen of this year.
Yeah.
One five, yeah.
One five.
My garage, there's going to be some changes regarding the silk fence that Mrs. Slaven wanted and, you know.
Do you have, if you have it, can I, can you bring it up here?
This is what I have, so.
Thank you. What's the date on this?
It's one five seventeen.
One five seventeen. So you have not updated the plan since January? Okay. My next question is... Thank you. Take that, sir. Thank you, thank you. I'll wait for you to be seated. I am familiar with your situation. The fact that you're going to be doing it by hand, I think is certainly more than admirable. I think it should be, you know, a nice addition to your property, obviously. But let me ask you, are you going to be doing any excavation or disturbance within five feet of the property line?
No. Well, the, the, if the plan is to replace the existing footprint, if the neighbors would like us to come in five feet, then that's fine.
No, I mean, to keep it five feet from your property line.
Keep it five feet.
Are you going to have, would you be, and this is just one member's opinion and view, obviously. But would you be, have a problem keeping all construction within, no closer than five feet of your neighbor's property line?
Yeah, that's fine.
Fine. I would be comfortable with it at that. And, you know, I wish you good luck on the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dell. Mr. Bond?
I see the arborist report is dated two years ago. I mean, so nothing's changed since, nothing's changed now in terms of...
He was the arborist?
Yeah.
No, I spoke with him today and he...
Well, that, that pertains to the old plan. That's not even, I don't believe that, that there's not going to be any disturbance.
Okay, but I thought you said you were going to top trees and all that.
That's different. That's not, those are, those are, those are completely different from trees that are on, close to the property line.
These are trees that are obstructing the, the view of the river. Right, right. But you have to get an arborist report to top those trees?
I had, I asked him to get a report. He didn't get the report to me, but he was, I took pictures today of peat tied trees that are going to be topped. I took pictures of those, and he said it's a standard thirty percent. It's standard.
But I would, so we want, we need to see that report?
That's correct. That's one of my comments.
Yeah, I think it was.
As well as any trees that are within any of the excavation limit lines that will be required in order to...
So when they come back for final, they should have it with them after they go to ZBA, okay? Fine, okay.
Can I just say one thing?
Sure.
The arborist report was generated from the neighbors.
Neighbors, yeah, that's what I thought. So the neighbors, there's, there's an arborist report in here that came from...
But it's also an old report.
Yeah.
I understand, but it was generated at the request of the neighbors. Why does the apple pen?
They, they don't. There's, there's a little bit of confusion, I think. So just bring your arborist report when you come the next time.
Are you using Alpine?
We requested it.
No, you're not, okay.
You requested it, yeah.
At planning review.
Yes. Which is why I just noted it and didn't read it.
No, I think the consultants have...
I'm sorry, Mr. Bond, are you done?
I'm done, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Bond. Mr. Warren?
I think the consultants have asked all the questions. I'm concerned.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Mr. Sweeney?
I agree. I think we've asked the questions. It has to go to the ZBA end lane, not for us. They have to go to zoning board, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. Mr. Mandel, are you on? Are you there?
Yep, I'm here now, thank you. Mr. Chairman.
Welcome to the party.
Yeah, it's nice for you to call me. Appreciate that. A couple of questions. Director, back in two fifteen, when they first, the first plans were submitted, they had an engineering report from Brooker. We don't need a, an engineering report this time around?
Well, it will, it will be referred as going to the zoning board, so put a little...
Yeah, because originally, yeah, the original plan, Brooker did not approve for drainage.
Right, because the original plan was much more extensive as far as the retaining wall layout. Again, they're proposing to replace them in the exact same location. So the drainage and the grading is not going to change, other than what happens during work. So I've asked for them to clarify, for the site engineer to clarify the extent of excavation that's going to be required and what trees will be affected, if any. There's no tree shown in this plan.
Okay. Now, are they going to require a new drainage report, or they won't be?
At this point, I don't think so, but we have to wait for the revised plan to be submitted to us.
Okay, all right. Now, with the, I'm looking at the plans you submitted. You know, you're talking about going to, which walls you're going to exactly replace now?
All of the railroad ties that are...
You have one set of railroad ties that are below your deck, at the bottom of the decks?
Well, yeah, those are, those might need to be repaired. They're not, they won't be replaced, actually. That, they're, it's, it's the, the railroad ties that are to the south of the house.
Where the steps come down?
Yes, yes.
Those are all going to be replaced?
Yes.
Okay, now, you have a retaining wall, when you come out, I guess it's your basement? That brings you out to your first patio area?
Um, there's a, yes, yes.
Is that wall going to be replaced there? Okay. Then you go down, then you have the large drop that you're going to put the circular staircase to from that look, from that?
Well, the, the circular staircase would go to the...
The upper patio.
From the deck.
From the upper, okay.
From the upper deck down to the, to where the...
Skinny, small.
The, okay, you're talking about the top deck on the fir, on the top floor?
It would give no access, except to go down the house and round and out.
Yeah, I know, I was, I went out there, okay. So you're, that's going to connect all the way down to the bottom patio?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. And you're replacing the stairs over on the south side?
No, um, yes, they would be, there's a small staircase there, yes.
Yeah, well, yeah, there's a small staircase. It's, the umbrellas isn't stopping it. Then it goes down, it keeps going down, and that's all going to be replaced? And it's all going to be replaced with the keystone?
Keystone would be, yes.
And just to go on, if, you know, I can see, you know, as the director said, we need a landscape plan. At least shows the trees, and I saw the trees that were topped. How many years ago were they topped?
Um, five years ago.
Five years ago, okay. So it's all new growth from the topping, and you're...
Yes.
Going to go below that old topping, or?
No, exactly the same.
Exactly the same? All right. And when they come back, I, this is my opinion. I'd like to see a, an elevation, looking at the building from the rear, so you get a better idea of exactly where everything's going to be. This plan, it's very difficult to see what it is.
Okay. Is that it, Mr. Mandel?
Yes, that's it, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mandel. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to this? Can you come up to the, to the podium and the microphone, state your name and your address? I would like to tell you that you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name's Donald Steinmetz. I live at nine twenty...
Sorry, you're going a little too fast for the stenographer. Can you say that again?
S.T.E.I.N.M.E.T.Z. Donald. I live at ten twenty Route nine W, which is directly below this property. I have no problem with anyone attempting to make improvements on their property. But from looking at the plans that were filed, I did not see a building footprint. I did not see contours. I did not see elevations. And there was a drainage drawing that was great for the bottom of the rip rack and key block wall. Where does it go? I'm basically concerned, I've, I've worked for many years with, at Lamont, with the Highlands Environmental Research Institute. I've been a GAS professional for years. And I just, from looking at those plans, I don't get it. I don't see what they are actually attempting to do. And I have no problem with their doing something, as long as they are in conformance with a critical environmental area. And I'm deeply concerned about hydrology and erosion. And from those plans, I don't get it. I just don't see it. I don't see, as, as the man on the, on my right said, I don't see elevations, I don't see contours. We've had problems with topping trees before, and all this is, that water all comes downhill. This is fractured bedrock, and water moves through it in really interesting ways, in unpredictable ways. So I would just like to see a, a plan with elevations that one could actually evaluate. I looked at that plot pretty carefully, and I could not make heads or tails. I did not see a building footprint. I did not see where drainage was going. I did not see elevations. I did not see contours. And as I've said twice before, I have no problem with people trying to improve their property. I have myself have gone for variances and received them. It was an arduous process. But I just want due diligence in, in approving something that could have a huge impact on my life and my property. That water on that hillside is really something. And from my examination of plans, and I've had some experience doing that sort of type of thing, I couldn't make heads or tails of what was going on. So I'd like to see a little more detailed examination of what's going on, especially in terms of drainage. If they are replacing some retaining walls and all that, that's basically making a bathtub on top of my house. Where's that water going? There are ways to deal with it, I'm sure. Maybe there aren't. But I'd like to see what the actual proposal is, rather than a really sketchy plan being approved at, without adequate...
Okay.
Data.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Okay, I see none and I hear none. I need a motion to close the public.
Make a motion to close the public.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. A second?
Second.
Okay. So are we okay going, all in favor? Are we okay moving this to, uh...
What about the, Mike said about the...
Well, I'm just, I want to know.
Who's that, this gentleman who was struck out here?
Well, the thing is, is it'll be back, if you give it preliminary, they can go to ZBA and get the variances and then come back. You're saying no?
Mr. Chairman, I have just a quick comment on this. I remember the property when it was being put in. We did quite a bit of work on it and the location of the walls, et cetera, if my memory serves me correctly. And a lot of these problems were addressed at that time. And right now, if you're just replacing walls, you're not going to create any major drainage changes in the area. Normally, I asked quite a few questions about this, but I do remember having reviewed this. It was kind of questionable, the amount of walls that were in there at the time, but it all seemed to work. And after a period of time, obviously, it really, it reaches a point of stability whereby the drainage is really not going to get that much worse. You have plants, et cetera, growing in, picking up some of the water and all the other things that anybody with a background in that field would certainly be familiar with. So that's why, on that particular one, I think we should eventually have them. But I don't know if we need it at this time, because they're basically following an approved plan.
Okay, so Mr. Dell, you're okay with moving it forward to preliminaries?
That is correct.
This is a question for the applicants. Are you going to bring in any fill for the lower patio?
Fill for the lower patio?
Yeah, to even it out.
Well, we have, I'd want it to be flat. If the surface is going to be gravel, I'm not quite sure when you see.
How, are you raising that, the elevation of that lower patio?
No.
Just redoing it.
Yeah.
Okay, so, all right.
Preliminary?
Yeah, and then they come back.
Right, and then they're coming back.
You come back with a full set of plans.
Right, yeah. That's what we're going to, yeah.
Okay.
That's, that's what I'm proposing.
Yes, right, yes.
Okay, so I need a motion for lead agency.
Motion.
Mr. Mandel makes the motion for lead agency. I need a second.
I'll second.
Mr. Young, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion for neg deck.
Neg deck.
Mr. Warren makes the motion for neg deck. I need a second.
Second.
Mr. Young, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
And I need a motion for preliminary with, just preliminary, right? Do I have to put the conditions in there?
Yeah. Yes, I'll make a motion for preliminary.
Okay, so Mr. Bond makes the motion. There's ten from Ms. Slaven, five from Bruce, three from Rocket County Planning, two from Highway. That's all the conditions.
And then we got, Greg, you want to add about the, when they come back?
Well, I think you heard our comments. So when you come back, just make sure that you don't need to do drainage. And I'd also give the plans that they talked about.
And you want to, and you want to see...
Whenever the, whenever the meeting is scheduled, you'll have to work that out. So everything has to be there with the elevations and...
Elevations, site plans, building footprint, contours.
Basically, all the comments that...
Arborist report.
Ms. Slaven said.
And...
So you should work it out with her about what you need to do.
And drainage if required.
And drainage if required. But that, you'll make that determination.
Mr. Chairman, is there any problem with the applicant's agreement, where there be no site disturbance within five feet of the southerly property line?
I, I, I don't have a problem with that, as long as it's not too egregious for you.
I think the applicant said that they, they were not going to disturb it.
Well, sometimes the applicant will say anything to get the hell out of here, so I understand. And that's the truth.
Yep.
Put it in the comments.
Okay, so, yeah, we'll, we'll let you, I'll tell you what. We'll, we'll, we'll table that until you come back with a full set of plans. And if you tell, you know, with the new set, that'll have all our comments on it. And if you say, "Well, I know I said this the last time, but here's a little bit of information that I didn't know, or my engineer didn't know, and it might be three feet or whatever." So we'll, we'll let that, I mean, they can't start anything until they, right? They can't start anything.
Can they go to zoning board?
Yeah, yeah, the preliminary will give them the chance to go to zoning. So that's why we're trying to move this ahead, okay? So, but I'm going to, I'm going to, I think that we'll wait for the comment for the five feet until you come back.
Okay.
Okay, and then we'll put it on as a final condition if, if everybody doesn't have a problem.
That's understandable.
Okay? Okay. So I need a second.
Second.
Mr. Sweeney, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so next up is Carp, PB number seventeen dash sixteen. They're also in a critically environmental area, and they're here for a pre-p preliminary, preliminary. Can you please sign in and state your name for the affiliation with the project?
Dennis Letson, project engineer.
Say that again?
Dennis Letson, project engineer.
O E T, S O A.
Mr. Esme?
Dr. Esme. We live in the two properties beneath this property, which is across the street from us. We've lived on these for about forty years. We're originally Rockville, eighty-five years ago. And we built the house with Michael across the street here, twenty years ago, twenty years ago. But in terms of neighbors and running off, we're, we're...
Got it? That's it. Mr. Esme, why don't you tell us what's going on here, okay?
Okay. Well, this is pretty much Dennis has shown. This property is pretty unique. All the properties to the east of it, going all the way up to Cluzon Mountain Road. And this point, actually going down, almost in the middle of the road. It goes into, here, my, those are all R-22. On the west side, it's R-80. That was changed after this lot had been created, you know, back in fifty or sixties. Forgotten the actual time it was created. Its grandfather, because it existed prior to...
The change? Yeah, yeah, okay.
I think it's in sixty-five. If you look at all the properties along the west side, they're all much larger than this piece. It's unique. And what we're hoping to get to is to be able to get the fourth zoning board to seek the variances that would be required.
Okay.
And there's a lot of, there's a lot of variances.
Sorry, that's just my opinion.
What I can say to that is, I bet I'm right when I say most of the properties on the east side of Sweet Boulevard have required one variance or another, because I've done many of the buildings up there. Variances.
Okay.
All of them, all of them, most of them, well, ones I've worked on, it all required variances. So it's not something that's linked to a house on Sweet Boulevard. And then, how long have you had the property? We had the property foisted on us by the builder who lived next door to me. He was a good friend of mine, a rock parry sheet, and some of you may know. And we checked into it with Martin Cornell carefully to find out it was grandfathered in before we bought it.
Okay.
About seventeen years ago, and he paid over a hundred thousand in taxes and so forth. I've had it on sale and have been unable to sell it. Therefore, we're going to have to build a house there and try to sell the house.
Understood. And Mr. Letson, have you, have you seen the comments about the driveway and the slope?
Yes, I did.
And is that something that you're going to be able to take care of for these people who are asking for it specifically? And I'll get to the comments, but I just want to, specifically, Mr. Peters and Ms. Slaven?
I have not seen formal comments from Ms. Slaven. We have the comments from the county highway department, which actually are a little bit more stringent than Bruce Peters' comment. Bruce had asked for a... Bruce had asked for a three percent slope for the first thirty feet.
Yes.
The county highway department...
Is asking for fifty.
Requires three percent of fifty feet.
Yes.
And the fire inspector at the project review committee last week had indicated that he was married to the maximum ten percent, as Bruce had raised. We've looked into that and revising for the three percent and the ten percent, and creating a five percent area immediately adjacent to the garage, uh, for an area to park it, be not overly steeped, would require, uh, lowering the garage floor elevation from four oh four point five to four hundred point seven.
Okay, Mr. Lexon, that's, we're getting a little too technical for us, so I'm just asking the question, is it...
We can accommodate those comments, and it would just lower the garage floor.
Fine, there you go.
Sounds like a plan.
Thank you. All right, uh, so, moving forward, the PRC has no additional comments from Jane Slavin, RA. Uh, she has seven, which includes, uh, the six variances plus the comment about the driveway slope, which we just alluded to. Uh, Mr. Peters has four. Brooker Engineering. Okay, so we therefore recommended the Carp site plan be approved for drainage, subject to the above project comments, and there are five. Rockland County Planning. Five, I'm assuming we sent this to Piermont. Everything, I don't see any comments from them, right? And Rockland County Highway. Has eight. And Rockland County Health has one. And that's all I have. Is that all right? Sorry about that. Prior letters. Uh, yeah, that would be handy, because I don't, wait, just let me see.
Yeah, I don't see them.
That's it. Everything else that was in here has been superseded or is no longer valid. Okay, so, uh, Mr. Young.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, to the applicant, uh, do we need to be concerned that the entrance to the driveway is infringing a little bit on the neighbor to the north, about fifteen feet? How you sweep in from the north and then proceed down to the south? It looks like it's overhanging onto the green property.
No, the driveway doesn't cross onto that property. It does extend in front of that property into County Road right of way. It would be subject to a county permit. But if you take a look at the vicinity map, the driveway for that lot extends over to the north side, and the, uh, construction on that lot is significantly away from this corner, that back corner of the property. So I don't see any reason that that could possibly be an issue for that parcel.
Stranger things have happened. That's, I'm not done yet. Also, um, I did see the for sale sign on the property, so I understand you need to build on it. Uh, conceptual design is incredible. It's a very nice, but it is, you are building on a ski slope. And it had, you're building on a ski slope there. It's a very difficult piece of property.
Years I've been working, I've been working for houses up here, so I know about building on the hillside.
Okay, just from the previous applicant before you, you know, the, the stability of that area would be in question. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Mr. Dell?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm looking at this site and, uh, what's called the preliminary erosion sediment and control plan. Right now, uh, you're showing virtually no disturbance, uh, on either side of the driveway when you're proposing to put it in, and, uh, obviously, you're going to be leaving a lot of this as is. And there's also a question of the, uh, portions of the, uh, front yard. Is this pretty much the, uh, a plan that you can build? Or are you going to have to have additional areas of disturbance in order to accomplish this?
There will probably be some additional area for stockpiling and temporary areas, um, just above the driveway. Given the county highway department wants everything contained within the site itself, and those areas would be restored when construction will be complete on the, the house and the driveway.
Okay, so what's your estimate of the heights of the retaining walls? I gather over ten feet in places?
Well, they'll be varied now because of the change to the driveway, but right now, relative to the upper wall, maximum height of the corner of the house is about, uh, eight and a half feet, and the lower wall, um, is about, uh, five to six to eight feet, depending upon where along the wall. Closer over to the south side, that wall's about seven feet into the garage. And then, uh, it's tapered down, and similarly, the wall at the house corner is eight and a half, and that's tapered down when it gets down to the, uh, Tweed Boulevard and the driveway.
All right. Next, again, with the same comment made on the previous, um, application. On the, I believe, the southerly side, you're showing grading right up to the property line, particularly in the area behind the garage.
Yes.
Can that be moved over even a couple of feet? I realize that's a very tight area.
Most likely, it could be moved a couple of feet off the lot line as far as the edge of disturbance. That grading in there is the swell that carries, uh, runoff from up the hill further and bypasses around the house. Right now, that swell is a little bit oversized, just to create a shallower slope. It could be narrowed a little bit, yes.
Okay, so, again, uh, it's kind of not fair to ask those kind of questions without you going back and doing your calculations. So, uh, I think what would be fair is that if everybody's okay with it, you'll come back to us when you're coming, if, if you do get preliminary tonight. I don't want to be presumptuous. And then you'll tell us, I, you know, this is what I looked at, this is what I can do, and then we'll go from there. Is that okay, Mr. Dell?
Yeah, so that's usually what we've done in the past, is the applicant has made that as a goal, and there were extreme circumstances. They came back and they talked to us about it. And I've never been opposed, when you have an extreme circumstance, to, uh, changing it. But it's just a general rule to try to save as many trees and preserve the nature of the area, which I'm sure we're all in favor of.
We'll do it if we can, if we can.
All right, well, we'll, we'll see it, you know, in the end, and I'm sure, you know...
Okay, Mr. Dell, what else?
Uh, hold on, Mr. Chairman, please. I, I know you want to get out of here, but I just want a chance to think.
No, well, it's not a question of getting out of here. It's a question of going on and on, so can you just...
On and on? Well, look, are you going to get into this again? I would not. All right. All right, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Bond?
I have no questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bond. Mr. Warren?
I think right now, I don't have any questions, because you have, you have to go after six variances. And I think, um, once ZBA looks at it, if you get all the variances, then there'll be more questions. If they change something else, then there'll be different type of questions. So I think, right now, I really don't want to ask anything until you've gotten whatever variances you need.
Okay, Mr. Warren, thank you. Mr. Sweeney?
I have some similar thoughts. I think it's a very adventurous project with a bunch of challenges to overcome. First, which will be going to the zoning board and getting some of those variances. So I think I'm holding off until I kind of get a sense of where we're going with this.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. Mr. Mandell?
Is there any blasting going to be, uh, as part of this construction site?
It's a possibility.
Will you know by the time you come back if it's going to be based upon your calculations?
Yes, because the, uh, previous comments and Mr. Peters', uh, comments currently indicate the need, and we've also acknowledged that for exploration test pits and, uh, percolation infiltration tests for the septic system and siting, so there will be surface and subsurface exploration prior to coming back here for final approval.
Okay.
But we need to get through the zoning board to know what exactly, you know, they'll grant in the way of variances first.
Right, regarding the septic system, are you going to use a retaining wall up there to, uh, level it, uh, level it out?
It's very possible, yes.
Well, when you come back, will you have that?
Well, yes, prior to final approval, we'd have to have a complete septic design approval from the health department. That is, um, one of Ms. Slavin's and one of Mr. Peters'.
And that'll include, uh, your, either, uh, additional capacity or backup power for the, uh, for the sump pump that would pump it up there?
Yes.
Okay. And just the last question, what do you, how, because that's a very narrow spot on the, on Tweed Boulevard where you're going to be building. Have you figured out where the construction equipment's going to be housed, and, uh, will you have the people out there on the roadway to direct?
During, during some operations, you would have to have, uh, road guards and traffic control up there. I'd want to speak to the highway department about the possibility of utilizing a small area within the right of way, because the right of way at this point is very wide, and the roadway, there's a big separation between the payments of the property. But generally, it would be constructed, actually moving into the site of the driveway, staging in the area that would become the, the head in front of the garage, and generally, building from there.
Okay, thank you. No further at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mandell. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to this? I see none and I hear none. Can I have a motion to close the public portion?
Motion.
Mr. Mandell makes the motion, second?
Second.
Mr. Warren, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Rob, you have something?
Yeah.
Okay. So, uh, I need, oh, okay, so are we okay sending this one forward too for preliminary?
Sure.
Just to see what the ZBA says?
Yep.
Okay?
Yep.
Okay, so I need a motion for lead agency.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Warren makes the motion for lead agency. Mr. Mandell, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
And I need a motion for neg deck.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Warren makes the motion for neg deck. Mr. Bond, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and I need a motion for preliminary with...
Clear with conditions.
Mr. Warren makes the motion. Ms. Slavin, seven, with the six variances. Bruce Peters, four. Brooker Engineering's five. Uh, Rockland County Planning, five. Rockland County Highway, eight. And Rockland County Health, one. That's it for now? I need a second?
Second.
Mr. Young, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Good luck. Okay, next up is Subaru Distribution Center, PB number seventeen dash fifty-seven. Okay, will you sign in and state your name and affiliation with the project for the record, please?
My name is Donald Brenner. I'm the attorney for the applicant, uh, officer for Independence Avenue, DePere, New York.
So where are we, Mr. Brenner?
Uh, we have, we have appeared before the zoning board, we have appeared before the architectural review board, we have gotten approvals from both boards. We are now here for final approval.
Okay, so the PRC has no additional comments from, uh, Jane Slavin. Items number four and number ten of the OBZPAE memo day, March eighth, two thousand seventeen, still have not been addressed. A roof drainage plan shall be provided, show location of new roof drains and the connection to the proposed water system. From Bruce Peters, there are fifteen comments. And then there's a letter from Gary Bowich, attorney at law. Uh, then there is correspondence from Brooker. Recommend that the Subaru Distribution Center site plan be approved for drainage, subject to the above project comments. And there are seven. And then there's the... Some comment from Subaru themselves, then...
That letter basically was in reference to the attorney's letter...
Yes, I got it. Thank you.
Answering that, okay.
And that's, and then the minutes from the ZBA and the ACABOR stuff. That's all I have, Cheryl. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we, I would like to have Mr. Diego just explain the final drawings to you.
That's fine.
Would you like me to go through the changes?
Sure.
Uh, I brought both renderings, Mr. Chairman and Board. This is the rendering that was presented to this planning board for the original preliminary site plan approval. This is the revised plan that was submitted as part of this final site plan approval package. And if you recall back, just to quickly orient everyone, this is Ramland Road on the bottom of the page. Blaisdale is off to the left. North is directly up on the plant. This lighter beige building or lighter tan building is the existing building footprint. There's access off of Ramland Road at two locations, where, right now, under existing conditions, you're able to circulate around the perimeter of the, uh, existing building. The applicant's proposing a hundred and thirty thousand square foot expansion to the warehouse component in the back portion of the property. We would continue access around the perimeter of the building. The original plans added additional parking areas in the back. If you recall, we had that upper parking area that was being built into the hillside. We also had a separate parking area with a separate drive aisle that was going to be contained in the back portion of the property. That was a specific discussion we had with this board at that time. We wanted to try to landbank a number of parking spaces. I believe the resolution said ninety spaces needed to be landbanked at that time. What we did with the revised plan, and that's where a bulk of the, uh, comments, or a bulk of the revisions have been made, was to the northern and to the eastern portions of the property, which abut the residential portions, um, or the residential property lines. Um, instead of actually landbanking this piece or this upper parking area, it's been eliminated in its entirety. Then, we also modified the design of the northern parking lot, so it is just a double-loaded bay, so you have parking on each side, but we're still proposing to landbank sixty parking spaces. So in essence, this plan with the landbank parking has reduced the total parking on the property by a hundred and three parking spaces. What this did essentially was really compress and consolidate the overall disturbance and development area. Another condition of your, uh, the preliminary approval was we have the one hundred-foot buffer along the northern and eastern sides of the property, because of the residential properties that exist there. Uh, the specific request was to increase this buffer to at least one hundred and forty feet. And by combining that drive aisle and making it just a double-loaded bay, the buffer now is a hundred and forty-five feet at its closest point, and then continues to get wider as you go to the west. On the eastern side of the property, by eliminating that upper parking area, we've actually increased the buffer there, excuse me, from a hundred and thirty-five feet, which was what was originally proposed, to two hundred and sixty... to two hundred and sixty feet in this area. So we really preserved more natural area along the perimeter of the parking to the north and to the east. And then we also supplemented the landscaping around the perimeter of the building. When we went for preliminary, we received preliminary, we did go to the zoning board of appeals for two variances. One was building height. That was one that was being requested. Originally, the building height was proposed to be forty-four feet. That was what this board saw in this original plan. The zoning board approved a building height, a calculated building height, which is based on the average grade around the perimeter of the building of thirty-six feet. So the overall building height was reduced between the two plans. And that was accomplished by doing a couple of different things. First, the building itself was lowered by five feet. But then on top of that, this plan originally maintained that first floor elevation of elevation ninety-three around the entire perimeter of the building. So we were carving this into the hillside and the entire portion of the building was exposed. With this revised plan and working with, again, boards and hearing comments from the neighbors, we are actually burying the north and portion of the east side of the building. So as you enter the property, once you get past the loading area that's facing one Ramland Road, the grade begins to rise. And it continues to rise to a high point right about here where only seventeen feet of the building is exposed. Then it continues to come down to where the full height of the building is again exposed, where you meet the existing building where the full height is. So we really did what we could to bury this portion of the building. Yes, sir.
You had said, I think you made a mistake in the direction. You had said north and east.
Yes.
Were you talking about north and west?
North and east. East is this side. The west was facing one Ramland Road and that's where all the service, the loading area is on. So north and east. We also supplemented the buffer around the perimeter of the property and we actually provided a berm along the northern portion of the property as well. The grade continues to rise. This is the low spot. It continues to rise up this hill. So what we did, there's an eleven-foot berm at its highest point right here because it's at the lowest. And we maintain that berm elevation as you go west to east. And the landscaping is proposed on top of it to try to provide additional screening around the perimeter of the entire building. So again, when you look at this, the back portion of the building at its highest point here where the grade is the highest, only seventeen feet of the building is exposed. All the loading continues to be on the west, or excuse me, yes, west side of the building, facing one Ramland Road. And one of the big improvements that we committed to this board was, right now, truck access is located both on the eastern side of the property as well as the western side of the property. As part of this plan, all truck access will be limited to the western side of the property. So a truck is going to be able to come in, pull into one of the loading spaces and go back out. They no longer need to travel around the perimeter of the building to do so. We added the gates that were requested to limit access in the back portion of the property. They're here and here. Again, another thing to just try to restrict access to the north and to the east. Evergreen plantings, continuous row staggered, combination of various spruces that are planted at eight to ten feet in height. And again, that's day one at the first season. They'll continue to grow and provide supplemental screening around the perimeter of the building. The existing vegetation that's out there right now is primarily deciduous, so you don't get that all year round screening. So this vegetation that's proposed to be planted will help supplement what's out there right now and provide all year screening. That's really the, some of the changes that we've made and really tried to work hard to improve the overall aesthetics around the perimeter of the building. Just one last point, lighting plan. That was a comment that was made by this board when I left. We committed to fourteen-foot height poles and the revised plan that we submitted had, complies with that requirement. All the lighting poles are limited to fourteen feet in height.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Young? I'd like to commend you for making those changes. I know I gave you guys a hard time with the building height. And I like, I love the design change you made there. Also the land banking, extending the buffers was a nice move as well. As to my legal counsel, the Bowich letter and Subaru's rebuttal letter, or?
Right. Well, the, Mr. Bowich's letter is indicating there was an issue with respect to whether or not this is a permitted use. There have been several certificates of occupancy issued for this property permitting its use as a warehouse. I'll just make the note of the dates, June fifth, nineteen ninety-two, July fifteenth, nineteen ninety-seven. Both reference warehouse, you know, permitted use interior industrial warehouse. Second one, alteration of existing office warehouse. Again, in January twenty-eighth, two thousand two, a CO for work that was done, alteration to a warehouse. References is a ZBA decision. And again, in July two thousand five, further changes which required another CO, but again, also indicates warehouse. So our position is this has been determined already to be a permitted use. I know Subaru did send a letter dated November eighth, which I think you should have.
Yep.
Yep.
You know, again, it also discusses the permitted uses there and the warehouses accessory use. But again, even more significant, I guess, than the, than what's in the code book, or pursuant to the code book, I should say. These certificates of occupancy have already been issued permitting its use as a warehouse, so the issue has already been determined.
Thank you. And thank you for making those changes as well. Thank you, Mr. Young. Mr. Dell?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I concur with everything Mr. Young has said. Having reviewed plans for decades now in this site when it originally went in, considering the limitations that you have, I don't know how this could have been done any better than this final solution that you put in. All of your landscaping materials are of top quality. They're of decent height. You've reduced the height of the building. You've put in a berm. You've increased the setbacks from the, the undisturbed area for the neighbor's property. My only one question, it's a minor one. You said the light fixtures are fourteen feet. Is that fourteen feet above grade or fourteen feet in height?
The fourteen feet to the light source itself. So they're all downward.
From the luminaire to the pavement?
To the pavement, to the finished.
That's excellent because we've, I've seen applicants that have had fourteen-foot light poles on top of six-foot hills with eight-foot a sun or tube.
No, we measure it from.
No, I understand.
Light source.
And that's appreciated. I kind of figured that. And I wish you luck with this because this looks like a very, very nice addition to the community, considering all the design problems. And I personally appreciate it that you really listened to the directions of this board and the neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dell. Mr. Young? I'm sorry, Mr. Bond? Sorry.
No, I, I think you guys worked extremely hard on trying to meet everybody's needs. I think it looks pretty good. Short of it not being built at all, I don't see you coming up with a better plan.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Bond. Mr. Warren?
I have to commend you on this plan. I think you listened to the board and to the neighbors. And you really addressed everyone's concerns and I think that you've met everybody's concern. I think you've done an excellent job and good luck with it.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Mrs. Sweeney?
I want to also thank you for taking all the comments into consideration and then the board and the community and making the changes recommended. One question for Rob. I think the other thing on the attorney's letter was about the ZBA's decisions not being legal or not being, you know, voted on yet.
Yeah, no, there's the, the, well, first, in any event, the board, that's a kind of a separate issue. The ZBA decision was filed in the town clerk's office on, I believe it was August one. August one of two thousand seventeen. So that's filed. That's a final decision. But again, the building department couldn't issue any permits unless it had the variances, so. But they, the record is clear that they have variances as of August one, two thousand seventeen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Sweeney. Mr. Mandel?
It's an excellent plan. I agree with Mr. Young and Mr. Dell's comments. Just a quick question. I'm glad you moved all the truck traffic coming in on the west side now and exiting there. Just on your, I was just wondering on your, your truck turning, your traffic plan that you show on SP ten, your plans. You show two-way truck traffic going all the way around. Is that a... I was just wondering why that was since the truck traffic, and the truck is, traffic's coming in on Ramland and going out on Ramland.
With this plan, we still needed to demonstrate that we have the ability to access around the perimeter of the property, both vehicle truck traffic, but also fire access, most importantly. So that was the truck that we utilized just to make sure that we can navigate around the entire perimeter of the building.
Okay. And just the last thing. Mr. Wells in his testimony before the ZBA just mentioned there were some trucks that would leave in the evening but return between four AM and seven AM. Is that just a park or is that loading or unloading or anything during that period of time or if you know?
No, no loading or unloading is done at that time, at that time period. Truck may be coming back for the, for the morning work later on.
Okay, thank you. No further questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mandel. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to this? Come up to the podium and please state your name and your address for the record.
Del Savio, two sixty-two Trenton Place, Orangeburg, New York. We want to talk to you on the left side. Like mentioned, that you just already mentioned, I have a question if this should be even reviewed tonight. I filed an article seventy-eight against the zoning board and Subaru. The minutes from July nineteenth were never approved. By law, minutes have to be approved and they haven't been approved, so I'm questioning if this should even be going forward tonight. They requested area variances, so as far as I'm concerned, they haven't been properly issued with approved minutes and actually effective. Secondly, you guys talked about a warehouse. It's a warehouse proposal which I don't think, I don't see it on any of the tables, is a permitted use in an LIO area. I see it on all the tables in an LI area, but not an LIO area. You could talk about all your CFOs for bathrooms or little additions internally, which of course, nobody knew what was going on in the community when they're adding a bathroom or something. And I'm sure nobody questioned the use at that time. This is a warehouse and it is not a permitted use. I think they should go to the zoning board and try and get a use variance. If it's not on the table, it must be a conditional use or a special permit. Which if it is, they're only, by code, allowed to increase the size of the existing building by fifty percent. This proposal far exceeds that. This is a massive, massive project. And it shouldn't be in an LIO area, even though they've been approved in both corporate parks back there for who knows how long already. But just assuming that these variances are accepted and we go forward, I'd like some assistance from the planning board. And at the zoning board meetings, they insisted there be no additional employees. And insist that they're doing everybody a big favor by eliminating the drive around. If they're eliminating the drive around, why can't, if all, they got, they have five indoor loading docks here now. They're making it better for these residences, but from these five loading docks, they're adding ten here, bringing it closer to all of us here. Outdoor. Ten outdoor loading docks. They insist all the traffic's going to come in here and back in, come in here and eliminate this. Fine, eliminate the drive-by in the back. Eliminate that and the parking. They don't need it. This is massive parking. They haven't, they're not adding employees. They've already got enough parking. The parking spaces are empty during the day. They have enough parking as it is. And that's the only thing we can ask for. They have, they're currently parking.
Ask you to finish up, please.
They're currently parking fifty unlicensed vehicles in the back of their place. By code, that's against the law, I believe. I don't think they got unlicensed vehicles. That's all I'm asking. They've gotten all their variances. They got their outdoor loading docks. They get their height. Please, why can't we eliminate this to give us an additional sixty feet of buffer from... And they claim they don't need it. He's saying.
Okay, thank you.
We don't need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak to this, come on up, please, state your name and your affiliation or your address, I should say.
Laura Del Savio, two sixty-two Trenton Place, Orangeburg, New York. I believe I read in the code that for parking, or correct me if I'm wrong, two, for every two employees, one space. I, I believe I read that correctly. I would also like to mention that I believe there are windows proposed. We're on the northern side directly abutting the project, facing our property. And as I stated at, I hope I'm saying the board right, ACCO bar at that meeting. At this time, although all of you and the zoning board have stated people have gone out of their way and met needs, I, as a thirty-five, almost thirty-five-year resident, do not feel our needs have been met at all because we raised our family here. We've lived here with pride. And we know the codes, it's not a favor to us to be nine feet above height and a complete change from the code of the enclosed loading docks. So that is a hundred percent change there and that brings about noise, pollution, traffic, which our residents are already extremely concerned about. And I would like those studies to be done and be sure all the proper studies are done. And particularly the windows as well, I'd like to emphasize. I don't think we've addressed that as much. For me, the privacy, the peace is a big deal, the environment, the noise. And to have windows overlooking our property is a big change of lifestyle for us. We have a pool. We have a lot of outdoor time. We have a glass enclosed room. We've put a lot of effort into this property and our property value. And in conclusion, I would like to say, I do not feel our needs have been met. I do not feel the proper studies have been done. I do not think there should be a driveway in the back and I do not think there should be windows facing us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. I don't see anybody else, so I need a motion to close the.
What?
Mr. Warren, Mr. Brenner, so.
Yeah, I just want, for the record, I, this was brought up at the architectural review board and the zoning board. And the applicant had committed to the fact that those windows will be opaque. Nobody will be able to see in or out and they were done strictly because they wanted the light factor into the warehouse.
Understood.
Okay.
Thank you.
And the, just the driveway in the back, that's a.
Fire.
Fire code.
It's for the fire code.
Requires fire trucks to be able to get around the building, right?
Okay. So I need a motion to close the public portion. Mr. Mandel makes the motion, second?
Second.
Mr. Bond, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
So I need a motion for final with conditions?
Final with conditions.
Mr. Warren makes the motion. Not yet, until we. Ms. Slavin's two. Mr. Peters, fifteen. Brookers, seven. That's all I have, Cheryl. Okay. Second? Mr. Young, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. The other business, Cheryl, what are we, what are we doing here? So Bruce, Bruce looked at it, said it was okay?
He has no problem.
Okay. The orange.
Also in the Lisa Rock County Planning letter, they feel that property is in, on land where they touched the Hudson River. And they feel that the Rock County Planning Board has ordered a review of the project, the building plan. Board needed to review the project, it goes to land, because the water is on. Are you going to look at that in a condition that we can... direction? I just write back to the village.
I have no problem with the village take care of it.
I mean, it's a Superstorm Stanley. We feel that Bruce Peters' actions on this application were sufficient.
The problem is, there's other issues that they're saying that the storage building doesn't appear to be within... appears to be within the town of Orange Town and that the deck and storage building don't appear to be located in the village of Nyack. But, yeah.
But Bruce looked at it.
Bruce looked at it and they feel that...
Well, did Bruce make a determination as to whether or not it's in Orange Town or Nyack?
He has no comment.
Did we know? Did you look at it?
Yeah, I did. Interesting, no, this is on the pier. So the part that's supposed to be in Orange Town is in the water.
Right.
Basically, the coast of Nyack.
Here.
The river run.
Small in the Maritime law.
Yeah, right. What is he...
Yeah.
I only want to ask what the Army Corps said.
The surface is small, but it shows you... And, you know, there's not a clear delineation necessarily, but, you know, so do we...
I guess they would come from...
Change the zoning map to...
Well, I don't know if the... If it's in the town of Orange Town, they'd need a permit, right?
This is a new one.
Yeah.
Nobody seems to know either.
I wouldn't do anything on it. Let's... I wouldn't do anything on it yet. Maybe you guys take a review, see if it's... You know, that's really the question. If it's a building in the town, then does it need a building permit from the town? Who did the... Oh, Mr. Kier, Leveque.
Right. The applications for the replacement of a storage building, which was destroyed by Superstorm Stanley. The storage building was located on the pier over the water. The replacement structure will be in the same general area and is positioned to meet the zoning setback requirements for accessory structures in the Nyack WF zone. The old structure was about 924 square feet and the proposed new structure is 484 square feet.
Would it need a...
484 square feet is not pretty big.
I emphasized what was there.
Okay, so we're...
Do they need a permit for that?
But the permit... Would the permit be from Orange Town or Nyack?
Well, that's what I'm saying. That's...
Okay, so we're going to say, we're going to let the...
I would defer to the building inspector.
Thank you. We're going to defer to the town. We're deferring it to...
You're welcome. Well, I...
No, to our...
I think Ops Pay will have to make a determination. Because if it's... If the town's supposed to give a permit.
Okay. We're going to let the Orange Town old...
The new director will be dealing with it.
Right, the new director.
Five weeks in here.
Well, there you go. Welcome to the club. You know what Gregory Peck said to David Niven in The Guns of Navarone? Remember? Did you ever see that movie? Well, he goes, when everything was hitting the fan, he says, "Well, you're in it now, mister, up to your neck." So, there you go.
I think I'm a good senator. Now, we need the minutes.
Minutes? Anybody?
I'll second you. I second.
Mr. Bond, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Augment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Bond?
I second.
They got them all tonight now saying they want to get out of here. You know, usually it's me. Just ask somebody. Mr. Sweeney, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Good night.